You want to take your turn. I will recognize you when you want to be recognized. So I'm basically your, your guide for the night. So you can just focus on answering questions and get to composing your thoughts. So as we go, I will take, you know, it's your turn, it's your turn. I will move it along. If you want to speak, then use one of your wild cards. I'm not sure if everyone understands what those are.
We're early.
What?
You don't. So, you don't, we're not, uh, everything.
We don't have any critical part.
So, I'm going to keep a running tally.
Right, right, we, the timer is thirty, two thirty seconds. And the timers that you will be looking for are right here. Yellow means you have fifteen seconds. This is. And red means it's, your time is over. So yellow is fifteen seconds, red means your time is over.
So, I mean, so this is, this is challenging because there's ten of you and we spread out over, you know, sixty feet. You know, there's two people in the room who are, you know, contained and easier to manage. So you're going to have to keep an eye on these timers in the center. I put myself over here so that I'm not blocking the audience. I'm a little off to your side, at least for you guys, I'm off to the side. But try to, like, I don't want you worrying too much about the time. I will prompt you, I'll remind you, I'll, I'll keep track of it. I have a tally. I have nine wild cards to use throughout the night. You can use them anytime you want, as long as I recognize you, you know, you go ahead and use them. I have the tally. If you're questioning how many wild cards left, I'll let you know. At the end of the evening, I'll tell you how many you have left. So I, so my whole goal is to try and make this as easy as possible to do. And so, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do. So, um, so you don't have to worry too much about the format throughout the night. You just have to worry about the topic.
You don't have to worry about the topic.
Then, now we answer a question, it's not, it's not format.
So, this guy, this wild card thing, if I wanted three, if I wanted to add, um, John Stiles, he's on the other end.
If someone down here said something that they want to sound on, disagree with, comment on, just let me know. There may be two or three of you, so I'll, I'll vote one, then the next. But I will call, I will say, listen, Michelle, you know, go ahead.
Is that to what?
Yeah, no question. Yeah, so.
You are a caller, just a camera.
For example. So the, the change is, we, we have found that with this forum, when you ask the same questions to ten people, by the time you get the person seven, eight, nine, and ten, there's nothing new to say, and you're just sort of being repetitive. So the idea here, period, is to have three people answer a question. You all delve into that topic, and then we're going to move to a new question. But if that is a topic that you want to comment on, if we're talking about wind power or cable lines, and three of you talk about wind power cable lines, and then we're going to move to a new question, and one of you says, you know, I have something to say on this, then let me know. I'll call on you, and you can talk on that topic. There are very few, in the questions we have prepared, there's very few repetitive questions. There's maybe two that are kind of similar, but for the most part, when we talk about a topic, we're going to talk about it, and then the next question's going to go into a new area. So if you want to talk about wind cables, or you want to talk about senior centers, or you want to talk about safe roads, um, those things, you know, when that question's asked, that's the time to jump in and talk about that topic, if that makes sense. Or you can do it in your opening statements. You can say whatever you want in your opening and closing statements. But, um, so does that make sense, sort of?
And then those are wild cards of thirty seconds?
Yes.
And then you're, you're awarded three, two hundred and fifty.
Yes, yeah, it was all, it was on wild card, it was on wild card. The, the, the idea is to try and get more topics on the agenda for you all, you know, more, more variety of topics, and not have everyone, anyone have to be the eighth, ninth, or tenth person on the same topic where all you're saying is repetitive. So it's designed to try and make it better for you guys and the audience. Goodbye.
Bye, folks.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to get started. My name is Christine Stinning, and I am the president and lead of women voters for Newport County. On behalf of AARP in Rhode Island, the Greater Chamber, Newport Chamber of Commerce, East Bay Media Group, Newport this week, we welcome you and we're glad you were here. To the audience and to candidates as well, please remember that all the organizations that helped write these questions, especially you as AARP and the Chamber, are all nonpartisan. The League is nonpartisan. The language that's going to be used in these questions specifically has been designed for a nonpartisan question for you. There seems to be concern about that, but I put you at rest, and it will be what the mood profess to be. So on behalf of all the organizations that are sponsoring us, welcome, and we're glad you're here. I would like to introduce Lynn Tongueet. She's our fill-in timer tonight, and she is Newport this week, so we're glad that she is here. And her role tonight was to say, she's making sure that she does have a time, was to tell you that you are to be good citizens, you are not to speak over each other, you are to show each other utmost respect in what you say. All questions will be asked of the moderators. You may not ask each other the questions. So, without further ado, our moderator, Scott Picking.
We can decide later if I'm worthy of applause. Why don't we rise for a moment for the pleasure agents? The pleasure agents.
To the blood of the United States of America, and to the world, who would stand for a nation under God, in this, with the great justice of God.
Okay. I'm going to give a quick overview of the format tonight, which hopefully you all understand, but it's going to have more pressure. So, for the audience, so we're going to, um, this is not a debate, it's a candidates' forum, so the candidates aren't really debating each other. They may indirectly, if they disagree with each other, that will come out. But it's not a one-on-one dialogue they're having. They're, they're answering questions and expressing their views and being seen and being heard. We're going to go down the row, starting over here, and we're going to have opening statements of up to ninety seconds for each person. When that's done, we're going to start the question period. I'm going to start over here again, and I'm going to ask a question that the first three candidates are going to answer. And then, anyone else who wants to jump in, jump in on that question. Each of those first three are going to be sixty-second answers, so one minute. When that's done, anyone else who wants to jump in on that topic, let me know. I'll call on you. You have thirty-second wild cards to use. You can use one, or two, or three, or four. If we hit your sweet spot of the one topic that you're so passionate about, you want to go on for four minutes, that's your choice. If you choose to do that, you're just using up all your allotted time in that one, you know, that one session. So, you're going to have a little bit of strategic thought, you know, if there's topics that might come up later on. We're going to have ten total questions, so we're going to talk about ten different topics. So you might not want to exhaust all of your time early, you might want to save some, so that you, you know, if there's something you want to talk about that you're not called on, you might want the opportunity to jump in. And at the end, we're going to have one-minute closing statement and any unused wild card time. So, if you save all that, and you've got two and a half minutes left of time at the end, you can have your one-minute closing statement and another two and a half minutes to go on and on if you'd like, um, which I've seen, and people have done that, and they've saved it up for five-minute closing statements. So you sort of think about where do you want to express yourself. The whole thing is designed so that every candidate has equal time. So when we're done at the end of the night, everyone, you should have had the equal amount of time to be heard if you choose to use it. You don't have to, that's fine, don't get out of here earlier than, than I predicted. All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Gleason.
If Ms. Stinning could clarify, when we receive a second set of instructions, the intro was sixty seconds, and the exit was ninety seconds. So, so I always have had to shave some of our speeches, so to speak, to fit in that timeframe.
Was our final version?
Ninety, ninety, it should be ninety, yeah.
For the closing?
Ninety, yeah.
Okay, for the closing, fine, that's fine, I'll tell them.
Are you asking for explanation on why we changed your show, sir?
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify. But the copy I have says you've changed the sixty-second, you've changed it to sixty seconds, the opening and closing statements.
It should say ninety, does it not say ninety?
Well, it says nine, but then it says sixty.
Give up the extra thirty seconds.
It says, opening statements ninety second each, then it says.
Okay, you will give ninety seconds.
Then it shows candidates will be allotted sixty seconds with a question mark there.
Okay, you will be allotted ninety seconds opening, ninety seconds closing.
Yeah, I, I think I shortened it to sixty because I wanted to get us out of here a reasonable hour, but we can, we, uh, we, we can leave it at ninety, I'm fine with that. Um, you know, we, we'll be having a lot of fun, so we won't want to be here.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we are going to start off down here. Like I said, why don't you take a moment to introduce yourself? Timers, hopefully, are ready.
Ninety seconds, correct.
Correct. Ninety seconds it is. Like I said, we're going to have a lot of fun, so the more time you guys have to talk about, Ms. Blan, Blan, um, Blan or Black?
Lang.
Ms. Blan, please take it away.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sondra Blan. I'm currently on the school committee, um, and I've been a resident of Portsmouth. I'm an engineer and strongly love this town absolutely. Believe in the people, believe in where we can go, and the hard work that working together will get us. That's all I got.
Mr. Gleason.
Okay, my name is David Reese, and Portsmouth has always been my home. Therefore, I am declaring my candidacy for the Portsmouth Town Council. I believe in this town, and I've seen it go through many changes, a trend that will continue. Guiding the town through these changes while considering the long-term effects is a task I'm well suited for. By nature of a problem solver, will bring the skill to the town council. After graduating from Wentworth and Northeast University with an engineering degree, I gained thirty-seven years of experience with the Navy at the Naval Undersea Warfare Center. My experience as fleet and service design engineer and program manager training in the ability to make complex decisions. As a student, not only was I educated in critical engineering, but I also developed the necessary skills of budgeting since I had to put myself through college, through hard work and careful spending, earned my degrees and graduated debt-free. I worked in a Portsmouth farm of my youth, which is now my home. My children received good education in Portsmouth schools and are both successful in their own right. My daughter still resides in Portsmouth with her husband and my three grandchildren. I know the problems of housing and taxes for both young families and seniors on a fixed income. I am married to former four-term Portsmouth Town Council member Elizabeth Pedro, so I'm very familiar with the amount of research and time it takes to make good decisions. Since my 2022 campaign, I have continued to attend the majority of council meetings, gaining a wealth of knowledge on town operations and budgeting. I am presently a board member of the Portsmouth Water and Fire District, Secretary of the Portsmouth Conservation Command, and member and artifact donor of the Portsmouth Historical Society. I also serve in the Charter of New York.
That's it?
I did it. I read it to my chickens.
And, uh, you know, going, going over my couple of seconds, we'll analyze and then go over my significant amount of time and start charging the time. So, Mr. Hamilton, please.
I will try and make up for it. Good evening, everybody, my name is Keith Hamilton. I am a Portsmouth resident for the past fifty-plus years. I have been on the town council since 2008, and it makes me the old person on the council. I respectfully ask for your vote again. I enjoy being on the council, helping the town grow. We would like to try and grow a little bit slower, but COVID changed a lot, and brought a lot of people from out of town who came in and caused the housing to go extremely high. So it is very difficult for my kids like myself, both my daughter and my son graduated from Portsmouth High School, but I don't think they'll be able to move back into Portsmouth. I'm proud of the work that we have done over the past sixteen years. Saving Mount Hope Park is one of my favorites. If nobody is, if you haven't been down there, it's a beautiful place to go fishing or just catch a sunset. So I respectfully ask for your vote, and I look forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. McDowell.
I'm Mary McDowell.
Yeah, yeah, you know, turn on the music.
It's not the, the time.
Hi.
I'm Mary McDowell, and I want to first thank the League of Women Voters and all the other sponsors of this forum. And I feel you've given the voters an opportunity to make an informed decision about who will represent them in the upcoming election, and for this, I'm grateful. I have always had a keen interest in the community in which I live. After owning property in Portsmouth for over twenty-four years, my husband and I officially made Portsmouth our primary residence in 2017. Full-time residency has afforded me the opportunity to get to know Portsmouth better, our people, our community, and our issues. My previous municipal background as a select board member for eight years in the town of Grandy Mass gave me the opportunity to experience firsthand, varying town budgets and school budgets, overseeing town departments, and negotiating fair and reasonable unit contracts for town employees. Additionally, I was instrumental in acquiring, acquiring a new senior center in town hall building, securing green community status, and instituting a pay agent program to extend the life of our transfer station. Sound familiar? My work as a high school principal, vice principal, and guidance counselor, creating numerous opportunities to work with stakeholders to ensure quality education for all. These diverse experiences make me well-suited for dealing with these problems, with, with dealing with and finding solutions for the challenges and issues facing Portsmouth today. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, what?
It took many times to get to the point.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Do you read them?
Good evening, my name is Mark Ryan, I'm a physician. We've been living in this community since nineteen ninety-three. I've been on the Portsmouth Town Council for the last eight years, and I'm running for another term. I'm, as I said, a physician, I'm not sure how that in any way prepares me to be on the town council, other than, as a doctor, you have to consider when you're reading studies, how the data is being presented, and how you can make a reasonable decision based on the information available, and that is a skill that I think everybody has to apply in their job, no matter what it is. I'm very proud of the job that the town council's done for the past few years. We are very fortunate in having secured the services of an extremely competent town administrator who had the wisdom to do an evaluation of all of the town's properties and get us an actual estimate of how much it would cost to fix them all. In the process of doing that, he also managed to secure the cooperation of church community properties to help us fix up our senior center, which is a building which has been condemned, and at a cost that will be extremely affordable to the town. I think we are fortunate to have his services, and I think for the town council, the major qualification we all need is we need to be reasonable. We need to hear what people want us to do, we need to be willing to consider that, we need to be willing to work with our services, with our police, fire, and our administration, and I hope to do that in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matt.
Hello, everyone, my name is Charlene Patton, thank you for having me. As a lifelong Portsmouth resident, small business office manager, I am deeply rooted in our town. I participate in various committees, such as the Senior Center Board of Directors, Club President of the Rotary. My involvement extends to partner recreation and other town organizations, including those focused on youth programs. I will, I have been attending council meetings over the past two years, which has provided me an understanding and concern of issues in our town. I am, I am to level, I'm sorry, I aim to leverage my knowledge and experience to tackle challenges with transparency, openness, and progressive thinking. I am committed to working for the betterment and well-being of our citizens of the community. I am asking for your vote on or before November fifth. Thank you.
Mr. Gleason.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, I'm David Gleason. My thanks to the League of Women Voters and to all that have made this political forum possible. I'd like to say that unlike Newport and Middletown, we are indeed a partisan town council with an obvious split between the D's and the R's. To me, this is a big detriment to our community, and I strongly believe that we should be nonpartisan, period. The year 2024 marks twenty years of my volunteer service and commitment to the town of Portsmouth, having joined my first committee in 2004. Many committees later, and with almost eight years' experience as a town councilor, I again ask for your vote. I ask that you look beyond party lines and vote for other involved candidates, including David Reese, Charlene Patton, and Mary McDowell, other candidates for transparency, who will go to town council meetings prepared to make common sense decisions for the beautiful town of Portsmouth. Since I have extra time, I'll just mention I'm married to, my wife is Karen Gleason. She was on the town council for four years, and school committee, four years. Prior to her, her father served on the Portsmouth Town Council, and her brother, so it runs in the politics, seemed to run in her family, not mine, I don't know why I'm here. I have one daughter, Jenny, one son, Dave Junior, both teachers that live in Commerce Point as well, and one grandson, John. Thank you.
Mr. Pierre.
Good job getting it right the first time. My wife didn't, wasn't so lucky. So I'm Juan Carlos Pierre, I'm your newest town council member, having previously served on the school committee for six years, four of those being its vice chair. I chaired negotiations and was served on the finance and personnel committee of the school committee, and looking forward to bringing those talents over to the town council, and want to thank the current council for approving my appointment. Locally, I was the founding chair of Coinage Latino Newport, which is located in Newport, and also the founding chair of the St. John's Lodge Food Bank. I really want to focus my campaign on education, the environment, and the economy, and how we're going to be looking forward to accomplish great success in the, in the next two years, and I hope that in the time we have allotted this evening that we could further discuss these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Field, field, willow.
Knew you were going to mess that up. It's all right.
He tried two hundred.
He tried.
First of all, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for having this forum, very honored to be here. A little bit about myself, I'm a lifelong Rhode Islander, born and raised in Johnson, Rhode Island. I decided to move here with my wife, who's in the audience right now, with two small kids that are currently in the middle school, which love the new additions to this evening here. I decided to run because I'm the chair of the Parks and Rec Committee for the past five-plus years, and I've seen a lot of changes in this town, and I take a little pat on the back with helping progress the town forward with a lot of the Parks and Rec stuff that is coming forward, all of the events, helping catering at the Core Hacks Foundation with the playground that was on turnpike. A little background about myself, I'm a fifteen-year small business owner of two businesses, both located in East Providence, Rhode Island, and my small business background, I've weathered all types of storms, COVID being one of them. I'm very well versed in budgets, having to keep two small businesses afloat while COVID pretty much shut everything down, so, thank you. So I think that lends to what our small town is, and with the opportunity, I would love to sit on this board and work with a lot of the talented minds that we have here today. Thank you.
Mr. Will.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. I would want, like to thank the Newport Creator Chamber of Commerce, AARP, Rhode Island, East Bay Media Group, the League of Women Voters for Newport County and Newport County for holding this forum, and I would like to welcome you all to the Counter Sense Point Improvement Association Hall. My name is Chuck Woldak, I have been a lifetime resident of the town of Portsmouth. My father was actually born on the second floor of what is now Moriarty's Lica Loco. Are you leaning forward, is there a problem?
Try, try to speak more into the microphone, you're trouble, I'm in trouble here.
All right. My father was actually born on the second floor of what is now the Moriarty's Lica Loco. I was a state representative from Portsmouth and Grits.
Grits, oh.
From 2003 to 2011, and I was elected senator. I've served many capacities with the town. Briefly after my service in the senate, I became a magistrate judge, judge for the family court. During the period of time that I was on the Portsmouth Town Council from 1988 to 1992, I participated and in fact drafted the senior exemption that has assisted many elderly citizens in staying in their homes and providing tax relief. I created the, well, I created the farmway exemption, and my time ran up very quickly, but it didn't count your interference.
You have five more seconds.
I was involved with the transaction that bought the new land property, which is now known as the Seventy Centaur. I'll get the rest on my phone.
Okay, we're going to move to questions now on the back end here. Ms. Blank, can you start here? Again, first three, we're going to answer the same question, you each have a minute, and then anyone else who wants to jump in, let me know. All right, so timers, we should speak over to one minute now. Where do you stand on wind power developer South Coast Wind's plans to run transmission lines up the Secana River and over and under part of Portsmouth? Do you agree or disagree on how the Portsmouth Town Council handled this process and decision?
Thank you very much for, for this question. Do you guys hear me okay?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for this question, and this is a very hot topic here in Portsmouth. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. What makes democracy work is people being involved. On this topic, we need to hear from the people of Portsmouth. It is your voice that I want to represent. I don't feel that we should have to pick to make ourselves align with a candidate. I feel that as a candidate, my job is to reflect what you want in this town. What I have heard and what I have seen from the facts is that it is not supporting the economy of Portsmouth and is not where we need to go. I'm open to hearing more facts, but I'm willing to learn more.
Thank you. Mr. Reese, same question.
Okay. All right, the South Coast Cable Route. Personally, I think it should be stopped and re-rev. I'm an engineer, wind power is margin of the best and susceptible to storm damage. That'll cause extended downtime, that's a hurry, things like that. So, recent failure of the blades just in calm weather, is an example. I don't think Portsmouth gets much out of it, and I'm against it.
Mr. Hamilton, same question.
Well, I'm being one of the counselors who voted in affirmative for the host community agreement, because Portsmouth really had about twenty-four hundred feet of cable that it had jurisdiction over. The real problem is that the siting of the cable route lies with the Energy Facility Siting Board, the Department of Departmental, the Department. And even if, in my thought process, and this is why I voted for it, even if we said no, chances are that that cable is coming through Portsmouth anyways. So if we say no, we get nothing. If we say yes, we get some, which is about twenty-three million dollars over in Portsmouth for the years. I am not in favor of wind power in the oceans, but that fight is unfortunately twenty years ago.
Uh, yes, let's start with, uh, Dr. Ryan, please.
Thanks. Like Mr. Hamilton, I was on the council that voted for the host community agreement. Unlike some other people, I actually think the wind power's a good idea. Global warming is a real thing, sea level rise is a real thing. One of the problems Portsmouth faces is the natural gas facility that is on Old Mill Lane. The reason why that is there is because right now, natural gas is much cheaper than electricity, and Newport is bound and determined to build more and more hotels with gas tie-ins. This is going to continue to increase the demand for natural gas, we must come up with alternative sources of energy, wind power's the way to do it. Not to be too fatalistic about this, we were told by the Energy Facility Siting Board that, uh, no matter what we voted for, they were going to keep that station in on Old Mill Lane open. So to confirm what Council Hamilton's already said, regardless of our opinion, the EFSB and UC will do what they consider to be in the broad island's best economic interests, not the opinions of the people of Portsmouth.
So, uh, I'll hold you a second, let me just make one.
Clarification?
Yeah.
Wild cards are thirty seconds?
Yeah, I'm going to address that. So, so wild cards are thirty seconds. I'm not a big fan of interrupting you when you're in the middle of a thought.
You can take two, my, my.
Correct, that's, so that's what, that's what I did, I charged you two. So that's why I did a charge you tips. So you don't, I don't want you to, you know, be building through your crescendo and then have to cut it off.
I really don't have that much of a stay, so I don't really.
You did, yeah. So we showed you for two wildcards. So the same thing goes. Anyone else you want to jump in and use these? You're welcome to keep talking, you're just gonna use up your time. Mr. Woback, please.
As many people know, I was not able to be involved in the South Coast Wind vote because of a conflict, because my family had an interest. Very simply, we are in a existential crisis on energy. I'll build my crescendo, thank you. Any other ethics not to get additional energy sources, alternate clean energy source is naive and it is dangerous.
Thank you. Who else? Mrs. McCall.
So there are residents that support the cable coming down the Seccon River, and there are residents that don't. As time goes on, more and more information is gathered, and more and more people are against it. If I had been on the council, I would have voted no, along with Mr. Gleason. I give Mr. Gleason a lot of credit for he was the only council member that voted no and allowed, and didn't allow the money offering from South Coast Wind to influence his decision in the community, especially in the island park in Comethence Point neighborhoods. Looking at the bigger picture, this cable and whole project will lead to devastation of marine life, loss of jobs for our fishermen, and the extreme high cost of electricity for this project if it does not work.
Please, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you. As most of you know, I voted against this, and I still think it's a bad idea. The Seccon River has the only SA1 waters, of course it has, and this high voltage cable, 375,000 volts DC, you wouldn't want that in your backyard, let alone our river. Without the time to go into this, I think if we had showed seven votes that said no, it would have made sense that we say this is a bad idea, because we know it's a bad idea. It's just, we're gonna take the money anyways. Thank you.
Please, Ms. McDowell.
At the time, had I been on the council, I would have voted no, only because at the time there wasn't sufficient information set forth. The fact that a newspaper article the very next day said Portsmouth Town Council begrudgingly approves host agreement with South Coast Wind. Okay, this agreement has been signed. It's the ship is sailed. We've $500,000 upfront, and over the next 33 years, $23 million. Now is the time to start to think about how we talk about and think about how we're gonna spend that money. That's what we have to start now.
All right. You good? Anyone else? We're gonna move to a new question. McDowell's gonna start with you, with Dr. Ryan and Mrs. McCall. Should the town support the state's proposal to construct a rotary at the intersection of East Main Road and Turnpike Avenue?
The rotary situation, again, is, as we all know, a very hot topic. And again, at the time that we had the public meeting on that, I was also, at that time, with that topic, didn't have enough information. And had we had more information, I probably don't know how I would have voted. But all I know is we're in litigation right now as a result of that, and it's a costly litigation. And I don't think if we had all the information and included the businesses around that area in the proper way, we would be in this predicament of litigation. So I guess when push comes to shove, am I in favor of it? I don't think I am, given the information that I have.
Dr. Ryan, same question.
So I'm not a particular fan of rotaries or roundabouts, whatever you wanna call them. I'm not convinced that's a great place to put them. But we were told by our Department of, the Department of Transportation, that in order to get our road paved, this was part of the plan. It's important that East Main Road be paved. Anybody who's driven down it recently will confirm that. So if the cost of paving East Main Road is putting in a rotary, so be it, because that's how it was presented to us. And if we find out that this rotary was a bad idea, God willing, they'll be willing to fix it and turn it back into an intersection. But first and foremost, we need safe roads. We need roads that are paved. That was how it was presented to us. That's how we voted.
Thank you. Mrs. Patton, same question, one minute.
I understand why some people like roundabouts. However, I feel the area and the size of what was promoted doesn't safely and properly fit in the location. Clemens is a very important business in our community. We need to support the one and only grocery store, large grocery store we have in Portsmouth. In my opinion, a roundabout in that location will seriously negatively impact the business in others nearby. Clemens and the other small business owners do a lot for our community. They support multiple fundraisers, schools and sport programs, the rotary, and others. I do not support the roundabout in that location.
Mr. Payara, you wanted to jump in on this?
Yeah, if possible, this is probably gonna come as a surprise. I actually probably would have voted no. The rotary, although I agree with a lot of people, I think the science behind rotaries are great, phenomenal at the Henderson Bridge, questionable in Newport, but it is, they have scientifically been seen to reduce congestion and reduce traffic accidents. The location is just not the right location for it. It's a really tight spot, and there has to be a better design. And also, the state spent millions of dollars fixing the drainage in that intersection just a couple of years ago. So although it's state money, as a taxpayer, we're gonna be throwing up that money in order to be able to just construct right over it.
Mr. Woback.
The engineering said it was the best idea. All of the studies indicate that rotaries are safer. That is the most dangerous intersection in the town of Portsmouth. People are injured. David, don't shake your head. That's the numbers, and you want me to get the chief here? You're wrong, okay? This is why we have the Democratic Party, because we are just one voice. In order to solve our transportation problems, we have to be bolder than we are, and the fact that Clemens, in a soup they're gonna loom, decided they would sue us, was wrong on their part.
Mr. Fierrell.
Should have waited for you to talk.
As a person that has a house located off of East Main Road, I have no confidence in the DOT. I have two businesses in East Providence that are affected by the bridge that is now closed and needs to be torn down, number one. Number two, we can change the pattern of the road by changing the light pattern. It's about a traffic issue. I don't think anybody's ever gotten really into an accident as much as they do further down East Main Road. You can do two for me, please. I do agree that East Main Road needs to be paved. I didn't like the fact that the DOT wanted to bundle it all together. That, to me, is not good business, not good practice on the state's part to try and bundle it all into hamstring us to, if you want the project done, you gotta do it all. Rotary, I do like rotaries. I know how to drive around rotaries, but I don't think in that location it was good. DOT does a poor job of signage throughout the entire state. There's no signage around the rotary in East Providence off of the Henderson Bridge. There's accidents there all the time, and both my businesses are affected by that. Pay East Main Road, put in sidewalks, and figure out a new way to change the light pattern at Clemens, and again, and also at Club Cumberland Fox. Thank you.
We can try not to have applause during the. Yeah, Mr. Gleason.
I would defer with Mr. Fierrell's last four statements that we need to do the sidewalks, do the tar the road, change the lights. I think we need cameras for all those people that don't wanna wait on the left-hand turn when they have a red light and they go anyways. That's what causes accidents. But DOT is designed, on their website, they give us a minimum and a maximum for the size of a roundabout. This roundabout does not fit their design parameters. It's too small, it will not work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Mrs. Woback, please somebody. And if you can restrain yourself while someone else is talking, it's not respectful to them.
I'm famous for having a problem doing that. We, Mr. Gleason asked our fire chief whether or not his vehicle could get by. He said yes, and Mr. Gleason said, well, I don't believe you. Look, the engineering was done, the traffic studies were done, we've had people looking at this. The original proposal for the roundabout, by the way, was a talent portrait. DOT didn't come down with it. We had it, and it would die at Clemens for about six months, with them promoting it like in the 2007, '08 era.
Yes, it was planned. You've been on this, please.
Thank you. Safety on the roads of Portsmouth is absolutely paramount, the size and space. There is not one solution to this problem. There could be other solutions. It is not rotary or nothing. There is another way to solve the safety issue. I don't support a rotary there. It won't help the town of Portsmouth. Thank you.
Okay. Are you all set? We're gonna move to a new question. Mr. Gleason, we're starting with you, with this one. And one thing I'll mention, because there's 10 questions, every one of you, at some point in the evening, is gonna be called on first to answer the question. So that's also trying to give it a level playing field for everyone. All right, Mr. Gleason, this is one of the times we're staying in the same genre of topics. There's consensus in town that East Main Road is getting more dangerous with greater traffic speeding and large trucks on narrow lanes with no shoulders and more accidents. After the town voted to further review the riding DOT plan and mitigate traffic with roundabouts, DOT decided to put all road approvals on hold on East Main Road, pending the outcome of further reviews. What are your thoughts on improving East Main Road, and how would you help revive DOT planning?
Thank you. Good question. Mr. Alvedi actually works for us. He works for the state of Rhode Island, and we pay for his salary. He is one arrogant man. He should not be telling us what we should be doing on these roads. We should be telling him. I attended the Middletown meeting when they had discussions about retiring up there, and there has been no action to date. I'm sure the Washington Bridge is impacting the costs of coming into a town, retiring their roads. But starting in Middletown, what they should do is take some of their own land, starting at the nurseries, pull the land back four to six feet, because there's plenty of room there, on the west side of East Main Road, and finding a spot to reroute, you know, change the drain system, so you actually can increase the width of the road by two to four feet, you know, total, two on each side. It's not gonna make any bike riding any safer, but it's a start. And I have said that at Middletown meetings, and if they start there, we could do the same thing in Portsmouth on the west side, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Payara, same question.
I would have to partially agree with Mr. Gleason. I think that expanding the roads would be a big thing. I know another side is doing the entire dig, just making the road one, single lane in both directions. Not necessarily in favor, especially when those west ends of East Main Road are both the lifelines of this island and this town. I think, yes, it would be able to minimize accidents and possibly create a bike lane, but.